Welcome.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
NSBA is all there a lot. And they would say that going to Chicago was more expensive than going to New York or San Diego, but it was centrally located. But take it from the bottom down. Everybody, the brother has their hand in your pocket. But by the time you have this person set up this and this person set up that. I can't imagine how much the city itself is losing.
You can pay quick. They're going to get hit really hard. I'm going into them now.
Have they had to call out the military? Have they had to call out? Can you imagine?
The Dr. Faulkner's one. You know what we do.
You can't imagine that when Rodeo Drive got hit and the design of rodeos in New York and the Mission Avenue. Can you imagine the phone call he got? A million dollar miles, not cheap. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Taxes are higher.
Yeah. Eleven, twelve percent. My daughter-in-law and wife will spend four to five hours at Nordstrom shoe section. That, I mean, I can lose them all day. I mean, it's a great thing. You know, I just kind of roam around, breathe, do whatever I want. No, no, I figure if they're gone for four or five hours, it's a great place.
Are we ready to start?
All right.
I don't want to zoom. I want to be able to move my own.
I'm sorry, we did not.
No, you have the audio here, so you just won't have your video on the meeting.
We did not. We did not have on here a pledge of allegiance. Is there a reason why? Or should we study?
Not a formal business meeting.
Go right in.
Should we start the meeting?
Please.
Yeah, I don't know that we do.
I don't think we do.
No.
I don't know. No.
Okay. So first, we have Molly.
Yep. So Molly's going to give us an update on the curriculum. And she's going to give us a real understanding around how we go about the purchase of our looking at curriculum. This is going to be important because in June 23rd, we're going to be bringing the purchases forward for our curriculum for next year. So most, all of all, this is all part of our budgeting process. But this is, Dr. Bolton will be giving you insight into what we're really focusing on. Dr. Bolton, you may start.
Great. Evening, Dr. Cuneo. Vice President Brown, Dr. Keenan, and the Board of Directors. My name is Molly Bolton, and I am the Curriculum Coordinator of the SSD Schools. And tonight, as Dr. Keenan said, I'm going to give you a quick curriculum overview of our process for writing curriculum as well as walk you through the platform. I know some of you are familiar with the platform, but we do have a lot of new members. So we just wanted to do a review and then an introduction for our new board members as well. Next slide, please. So the intent really is just to review that process and the platform that we use called Build Your Own Curriculum With You in order for you guys to understand how to access the curriculum that you'll be reviewing for the board meeting later in June. Next slide, please. So just a quick review, hopefully, for most of you, what the curriculum is. So the curriculum is really the what, not the how. So what we want students to know and be able to do, not necessarily how we teach it. It provides that continuity of what we are teaching across all of our schools. It guides instruction for student success. And also, we ensure that all state and local industry standards are addressed through our curriculum. Next slide, please. Why do we need a curriculum or a curriculum guide? So first of all, it gives us that mechanism to talk about best practices from research in teaching specifically to a specific subject area or program. And again, really ensures that we have those standards addressed for the state requirements. It also helps us provide that understanding of what needs to be taught in reference to not only the standards, but also our students' needs. And we do have a curriculum for every grade level. It is required by the state of Missouri that we have a curriculum that is aligned to the standards. And it is also part of the teacher evaluation process. Teaching Standard 3 deals with teaching the board-approved curriculum. And it is an expectation that 100% of our teachers will be using the curriculum. Next slide, please. So when we look at the components of a curriculum, we start with the district's mission and vision. Then we talk about the graduation goals for that particular area of curriculum. We have a course rationale with a course description that also entails our curriculum writing and review process. We have an articulation or a scope and sequence so teachers know what to teach when. And we make sure that there's alignment both internally from grades kindergarten through 12, or in our case, age 21 for our transition students, as well as externally. So aligning it to those state standards as well as industry standards. We also have learning objectives or what we often call learning targets to go with our classroom learning systems. And those are those measurable attributes that we have within the curriculum so we know exactly what students are learning. It may also include common assessments or ways to assess their learning as well as learning activities. And if we have textbooks that accompany that curriculum, we will do an alignment of the textbook and the curriculum. Next slide, please. So we house our curriculum on a product called Build Your Own Curriculum. And you can see the website there as well. Next slide. And the way our curriculum is organized is basically in four levels. So I'll go a little bit deeper into each one of these levels in just a few minutes. We start with the course, then move to bigger units of that course, down to topics, and then to our specific learning targets. Next slide, please. So the course is really the largest organization. It's our whole, our big picture for the whole year. When we look at the fields in this page, we have a course description that gives an overview of what this course is about. It also lists the units within that course, which is where we break that course down into logical units that make it more easy to, easier to. And then there's a course rationale. Why do we even have this course? What's important about it? And then down to the learning requirements. What do we want our students to know and be able to do? So an example of a course could be like kindergarten science, or at our high school level, we would have a biology course. That would be an example of that. Next slide, please. From our course, then, we go into the units, which is a subunit of the course. Oftentimes, a unit covers many topics. So within there, we would have a description of that unit and then a list of the different topics for that unit. We also have those essential questions or those big ideas that we want to be able for students to answer. Typically, those essential questions relate to why is this important in life? Our academic vocabulary that we would want our students to master within that unit. The materials and resources that we would use to teach that unit. Oftentimes, we'll include adaptations and modifications from many students within there. And then attachments as might support that unit. So an example, when we, if we stick with science, an example of a unit within, say, kindergarten science would be physical science. Next slide, please. Our units are then divided down into topics, and our topics cover many learning targets. The purpose of topics and having that smaller piece within a unit is really to help with pacing of that unit and chunking of the information. So that topic level, again, contains a description of what that topic's going to cover. And then we would see the learning targets, the learning activities, and attach. So in keeping with that kindergarten science, we would have physical science. And then one of the topics within physical science would be properties of matter, properties of matter. Slide, please. The smallest unit of our curriculum is the very specific statement of what we want our students to know and be able to do. It's a critical piece for this course, for our students to be able to do. It is also tied to standards. But what we need to remember is that those standards are end-of-the-year targets. So oftentimes, we have many standards tied to, or many targets tied to one standard where we're scaffolding that end-of-the-year target in smaller pieces for our students to learn, unpacking those standards. So an example with our kindergarten science, physical science, matters of property, a target would be describe physical properties of an object, for example, shape, color, mass, size, by using senses and simple tools. For example, magnifiers, equal arm balances, and/or non-standard measurements. For example, bigger, smaller, more, or less. So you can see where we could really measure where, if a student had mastered this concept or not. Next slide, please. So I want to walk through how to access this. You will be given the website as well as a login. The login is the same. So when you get to this website, you'll have this page right here. And if you look where the cursor is over on, hopefully, the left side of your screen, it's on the left side of my screen, where it says educator login, you will log in there using the username and password. So you will select our state, first of all. And then our district. And you can start typing in special school district, and it will get you closer to the target. And then username, board. And the password we will be using is password. And from here, you will see a list of all of our curriculums. Mark, can you make it just a little bit bigger? There you go. So what you will see, next to some of these courses, you will see the word pending in bold. So for example, if we scroll down here, yes, thank you, the cursor's right on social studies, which is a pending course. Social studies is one of the courses that we reviewed this year. And so that will be one of the courses that you will review. We will have a list of all the courses for you to review. We had several courses, art, music, and technology that had brand-new state standards this year. So therefore, they were rewritten in order to align to those standards. Social studies, we wrote K through, we rewrote K through 12, all through our high school courses. So then, if you would just, Mark, please go ahead and select that social studies course. I can put in the easiest way to view that course. If you go here, it shows your scope and sequence of the course. If you don't want to do a lot of clicking, what I would suggest is going over on the left-hand side to where it says print course. Go down just a little bit, up, up. It's, it's scope and sequence, course details, big picture, print course. There you go. From this screen, you will be able to export a report into a PDF, which oftentimes makes it much easier. So, Mark, if you could go up to the export course, and there's a little dropdown, select PDF. And then. Make it a little bigger. Yeah. There we go. It'll take just a moment to load that course. Did it export, Mark? Yes, I believe it did. So from this, you will be able to, you will be able to scroll. Can, there you go, make it bigger. Thank you. You'll be able to scroll down. So you see the course description, the scope and sequence, the course rationale. You can go ahead and scroll. And then you'll see those graduation goals that we have and the committee that worked on this. And then if you keep scrolling, you'll actually get into your units. You'll see with the description, the essential questions, vocab, materials, and then down into the topics and the learning targets. So you'll be able to review those. The numbers underneath those learning targets, if you see those under the description, those are the standards that they are aligned. So that's, if you have any questions as you're reviewing or need further information, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. But this will hopefully help you in reviewing the courses that we are asking for board approval of in June. If you go back to the PowerPoint.
Do we purchase curriculum? Is this what, how this works? I've always heard about school curriculum, but I've never seen it in action like this. So there's no point reinventing a wheel, right? So are we purchasing curriculum and then modifying, Molly? Is that what you describe it as?
No, we write our own curriculum. We purchase the materials to support our curriculum. So we, we actually have our teachers writing our curriculum with the guidance of the standards so that it's, it meets the specific needs of our students, but yet also meets those industry and state standards. And then what we purchase are the materials then to support, to support the teachers' teaching curriculum.
So how often is a course curriculum rewritten?
So it is reviewed on a four-year cycle. We review it every four years. The only exception to that is if there are new standards that we need to write a curriculum and align it to the new standards.
Is that the reason why this was marked as 2017 in reference to a moment ago? How it ended up in the, if this is basically what was?
Those were, that was the year the standards came out for, for that course. It is aligned to the 2017 standards because that was the last time standards were updated for our social studies courses. When we do a review process, we look at, you know, how our students are doing with the, you know, with the content and make, and get feedback from teachers and make adjustments as needed based on our test scores, based on our local assessment scores, as well as student and teacher feedback. All right. I think if we could go back to the PowerPoint, I believe we were, questions? Any other questions? All right. Thank you for your time. And again, if you have any questions as you're reviewing the curriculum, please let me know.
So when you see for the materials in, on the June 23rd agenda, right? Molly?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Are we going to have the materials being purchased at the June 23rd meeting?
The materials for this were approved already. The materials for purchase, yes. It would just be the approval of the curriculum.
Okay. So though, okay, so you're going to be approving this on the 23rd. Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to be doing a hiring update. That's one of our goals, to make sure that we're looking at. And I will say, our HR department has been working very hard over this time of closure. So they're going to update the board on where we are currently at for our hiring so that we can start to be prepared for the opening of school in August.
So was the PowerPoint in for Doc, right?
Oh. It should be.
There was, I know this one I'm.
Well, good evening, Dr. Cuneo and Vice President Brown. I'm, of course, Amy Schechter, Chief Human Resources Officer. But joining me tonight in my presentation is Dan Kelly, Director of Human Resources. And we're going to share with you an update on the hiring that has happened in preparation for the school year. So I'll let Dan start on the next slide.
Sure. As we started with a kind of a overview of where we are at with teacher vacancies, so these are classroom teacher vacancies, kind of sitting at the time of submission, nine vacancies. And you can see the districts represented at Hazelwood, Normandy, U-City, Furt floor, North Technical, Early Childhood, and VSP. Since then, I will say that we filled the last position in Normandy. We filled the last position in University City. We've hired an early childhood teacher. And our VSP site that was recently approved by the board has been filled as well. Kind of looking at north of 99.26% of our positions are filled and hired at this point at the time of submission, 86, since we were closed in March. But now we're over 90 teacher-level staff have been processed since closure. Next slide, please. As we look at our student support services, so more of our related services, we currently are sitting with zero social work vacancies, zero speech-language pathologist positions, nine nurse positions. I will say that number has come down a little bit. I think we hired two yesterday. So we currently have about seven district-wide.
Can we please, for a second, please? I remember we agreed to hire additional nurses so that we wouldn't have to go through blocking, yeah. In other words, to hire, to hire individuals.
Floating ones.
Floating. I was going to say rent a nurse, and that sounds horrible. But was this, if we hired full of these nine, we will not need as many?
Correct.
Okay.
And like Dan said, he hired two yesterday. He's saying we, it's he, but yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, and some of those nurses' positions were actually kind of labeled as housed at central office and deemed a float nurse. So I believe we hired maybe three out of the four float nurse positions that were approved recently. School psychologist positions were down to two. And then kind of an overview of student support services hired since closure, hired about 17 social workers, 28 speech paths, four nurses, and 17 school psych, school psychologists. Next slide, please.
You said at the last meeting, we were having difficulty filling the school psychologists, but since we changed the standard, you've been able to hire four.
We didn't, we didn't change the standard. We just started off accepting the other certificate. And Dan, how many school psych examiners have you hired since the last meeting?
I believe all four filled. Yeah, so I think you converted, you adjusted four, and we filled four. It was, it was tremendous, actually.
So paraprofessional vacancies, I know I talked with the board a little bit before, as well as district administrators, that, you know, we currently have about 114 vacancies moving into the 2021 school year. We started our posting for paraprofessionals on December 23rd. We've received 277 total applicants at this time. And we've been able to hire out of those 277, 117 to date. We've had a real slowdown in applications. Our average weekly submission since the district went into shutdown has been about nine. However, last week, we did have an increase for the first time. We had 17 applications last week. So we're starting to see an increase. We're hoping that that repeats at the end of this week. But that is something that I'll start including in my Friday memo with our para applicants as we are increasing. We have processed since January 56 resignations from paraprofessionals. And, you know, as Dan has hired about 110 teacher-level staff since we, he's been working at home, we've also processed about 49, or a little over 50 at this point, paraprofessionals.
Do you have those paraprofessionals? They had an exit interview, and we know why they left.
We can pull that data, yes. Yes. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a breakdown of our, with our application, kind of where we are sitting with our parents and seeing that some of them, you know, they didn't meet the criteria, as well as some that we reached out to, they didn't get back to us, or they are no longer interested when we reached out to them. And then we have a number of them that, 55 of them, that we're currently working on trying to get them to submit the rest of those things. We need to, we need to reference those types of things. So it's a lot of daily and weekly communication with them from the HR team. We have 47 that have been sent, have been given an invitation to interview but have not yet responded. And then we actually have 11 interviews set up for later this week. So that number could be reduced to 36. So we are starting to see more and more. But out of this initial posting, we have 117 that we have hired in place that will be filling positions for next year. Next slide. Next slide.
So when you look at our vacancy summary, so currently, as previously mentioned, we're sitting about 99.26% positions filled. Para's 94.28% filled. And again, just kind of an overview of what we talked about. Again, the teachers has been updated. So nine teachers, 114 paras, zero speech paths, zero social workers, nine or closer to seven, and then school psychs is kind of what's left for us to fill. Next slide, please. So kind of a prior summary of our prior two years. So you can see 2018, 2019 data, 2019 and 2020 data. So teachers kind of fluctuates 98.5% filled. Now keep in mind, this is August data. It's, it's the closest thing that we can find. 1920, August data was reporting about 98% of our positions filled. And then we're currently sitting at a little north of 99% of our positions filled in June. Our para positions, again, going back a couple of years, 95% filled. Takes a little bit of a dip to 93% and then now we're at 94, a little north of 94%. Now keep in mind, like as, as mentioned earlier, 18, 19, 19, 20, we're August 1st. So sitting, sitting here in June 9th, 2021 data. Next slide, please.
I recall last year we were sitting close to 100.
Yeah, that's, I've heard that too. I guess I can't speak to that. So the COVID-19 closure has really presented some hiring challenges, but also some opportunities. We've kind of moved everything to an electronic format. Whether that's sharing of information, whether that's interviewing, question and answer. So the other challenges that we experienced, interconnect, internet connections with candidates and hiring teams are not always reliable. We're also having to adjust on the fly with contracts and employment agreements being set out electronically instead of through the mail. And then another challenge is that key personnel in the hiring process are working apart. So what used to just be a quick walk out the door and have a conversation now is a text or an email or a phone call. So it's just a barrier. But some of these are actually turning out to be really positive opportunities for us to kind of look at what we do and get a little bit better. Next slide, please. So adjustments to the hiring process. We're really making sure that all of our applicants have the appropriate certification or in the case of December graduates or people relocating to the state are on or in progress of becoming appropriately certified. As mentioned, back in February, we really adjusted our application really by streamlining those essay questions, by eliminating them. Another adjustment has been proactively engaging the applicant pool. So really looking at the people that have expressed an interest working with us, really kind of being proactive with them. These are our positions. Here's the hiring manager. Here's their email, phone number. Really having that applicant kind of be a little bit more aggressive in terms of selling themselves to our area coordinators or principals. Sending daily or weekly updates with hiring managers and including directors on those emails so that they're fully aware of where they, what vacancies they have, what schools they're in. And then I politely ask for an update on where they're at in the progress, in the process. We did have a monthly hiring event scheduled that we had to eliminate because of COVID-19. Next slide, please. Again, another opportunity that presented itself is a new electronic onboarding process. It created an opportunity to look at how we kind of orient, bring in employees for orientation. So the process is now 100% electronic, using current technology, PowerSchool in coordination with payroll and insurance. So really the employee or the potential employee can really log on ahead of time and map out their forms and fill out their documents so that we can start processing them. The I-9 process was moved over to Equifax as another opportunity for us to minimize contact with, with the candidate. So again, allows us to process employees in a safe manner, obviously while maintaining social distancing guidelines. So again, another opportunity to look at something that we're currently doing and how we can make it a little bit more efficient, a little bit more timely, a little bit more responsive and a little bit more value of everybody's time. Instead of having applicants drive in to fill out a W-2, they can do that all online now. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry.
Okay, our hope with that electronic onboarding is we had always referred to it as new orientation. And so, but new employment orientation was really come in and listen to some information from human resources and fill out a lot of employment documents and then listen to some information from payroll and fill out all the payroll and then insurance and it's just kind of a litnea fit and sign and complete. And so it's being able to do this electronic onboarding and do all the paperwork in advance when we are able to have people come back in and it'd be in person to really have it be more of an orientation, more of a welcome to the district and more of a focus on our mission, our vision, our goals as aligned with our C-SIP as well as, you know, big overarching areas in our instruction and curriculum and those types of things to really give them more of an actual welcome to the district and do that without just spending four hours filling out form.
Thank you, Amy.
So, and I would just want to thank Dan, like I said, you know, he joined the HR team in September and he has really done a phenomenal job with hiring, especially during the busiest season, being completely on an island by himself at home trying to figure out how to do this. And being able to hire close to 120 new teacher level positions for the district since he's been at home. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
No, thank you, guys.
How easy going.
I ever say you weren't? No, I just remember this was significantly different last July. So I remember when both Amy and I walked in July 1st, it was significantly higher rates. And I think it was a good point to pick, you know, to point out that the data in here, it looks like it's pretty comparable, but the data was that big push to hire a lot of people in July to get to August. So now we're already, we're a month and a half ahead of time.
That's June and we're comparing it to August.
Exactly.
How did we in turn do on diversity goals?
Well, that we will, we will be bringing that back in February.
Because until they fill out that employment paperwork, we don't know their diversity. But we will, we will bring that back at a work study, Dr. Keenan, either in September or October, whenever she gets those time. We will share that like we did with the board in February in that same format. Yes.
Dan, Mr. Parkner, I would like to watch you on using the term diversity instead of equity. You're perfectly correct, thank you.
Well, we have, we have a defined equity.
No, we have.
We know what diversity. All right, so should we go to our last presentation?
Excuse me, I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
See me doing a little BRC wave and I got my hand up over here. Okay, so, so my question was about, have we thought as far, far ahead as in terms of orientation? Because I know that last year, you know, they had two or three separate teacher orientations going on and maybe I'm thinking too far ahead, but considering the environment, what have you guys thought about what that's going to look like this year?
Are we, are we talking about our new teacher orientation?
Yes.
Yes, we'll, we'll still be providing that with same type of information in electronic format. And Molly, if you would like to jump in, feel free. But my understanding is there'll be both, you know, synchronous and asynchronous learning opportunities for our new teachers with lots and lots of videos and tutorials to really prep them.
Yeah, so we'll be doing some of, some of it through virtual learning. So we will have instances where our, our new teachers will be zoom, you know, zooming in with facilitators, with administrators to receive a lot of the information. Also, we'll do something similar to what we call flipped learning where they will, for example, with special education process, they will view some content on their own that we provide for them and then come together in a live, a live environment through technology, through Zoom, where they can have their questions answered so that they really, really feel prepared. So we, I think we'll be bringing that more specifics to you guys in July. So you'll know exactly what that looks like.
Yeah, you're correct. So in July, we're going to do an update of what, what openings of school look like, what will all of our new teacher convocations, all of that. And then we'll talk about that phase. Basically, we'll be updating the board on phase three of reopening. And just to give you a little, as we move into the.
So there's a phase three.
Right, because as we start, because everyone say we have a superintendent Zoom tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock. And we are all basically upset that we're going to continue to monitor, but we'll know where we're going to be at by the middle of July. So the goal is that if we had to say we wanted to, what would it look like in August? We are hoping that we will be, you know, having our students return. We are already planning for that if it would, if we had to do that with our principals, with social distancing, with the PPE, much like we will talk about in the phase one approach for reopening. But we are monitoring that situation, but we will have a formal notification going on and you guys will all be a part of that understanding of what we're going, what it's going to look like in August.
I segue into the last presentation.
Right, this is our last presentation. So we're going into phase one of reopening the district. And so I've asked that Amy Schechter and Wendy Penegraft update you. You can see that typically Dr. Bauer has been the one presenting these. But he is, we are transitioning as he's looking towards his retirement. We want to make sure we're transitioning appropriately with the board. So we'll have Amy and Wendy.
Okay. So we're going to talk to you about our plan for reopening the district in phase one. And we'll, we'll start with the first slide. So really to preface this, we, we've had, and Dr. Bauer has shared numerous board meetings now, tons of planning and lots of meetings. And we had a full committee forum to really work out the details of what our reopening plan would look like. We're really at that point that we have the, the plan complete and so that committee is, has been dissolved. We're really just down to problem solving and we're still continuing to do that. But we did, this, this slide is an agenda that was shared. We did a Zoom meeting with everyone who is considered a phase one re, returned to work employee. We did that on Friday. And it gave Dr. Keenan the opportunity to, to talk to everybody. And then as we walked through, Marie McCoy from Courtyard Nursing, and I really had the opportunity to talk with them. So as we go through our presentation with you this evening, we're going to cover a lot of the same things, just talking about the, the phase in approach as well as our screening, our workplace modifications, our PPE. And then we'll also, at the end of this presentation, talk a little bit about what it looks like for phase two and three. Next slide.
So there are three phases. Phase one will begin sometime between the time of June 15th and July 1st. As Amy had shared, doctor, when Dr. Keenan spoke with all of our central office staff, she let them know that we would be providing them a minimum of one week notification when we would be returning with the dates that we would be returning sometime to central office between June 15th and July 1st. It includes all of our staff in our central office, our learning centers and our schools. That would be our administrators and our administrative assistants. We would be looking at providing time from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. The staff on phase one, again, will be notified one week in advance. And staff receive communication, as Amy talked about, with all of our safety procedures. So it is our plan that when we do this, myself and Amy and John Mueller will be outside preparing staff as they enter. So we are going to prepare them ahead of time prior to them coming into the building to kind of ease some of their concerns. Next slide.
And so really what we'll be implementing is really two tiers of screening. The first thing is that we are going to ask our employees to engage in daily self-screening at home. So we provided them all with a list of what typical COVID-19 symptoms are. And we're, we've updated that a couple of times as the CDC has changed their list of symptoms. And we've also, in addition to the symptoms, obviously, as we've all heard, if you have been in close contact with someone who has been diagnosed or presumed to be diagnosed, that you should not report to work and that you should report your absence as a sick day to the district. But that would be our first stage is just to everybody self-assess and decide if you're feeling well to come into work COVID-related or not, now that we'll all be coming back to work. Next slide.
So any staff member entering central office in the learning center will be required to take a temperature. So we will have staff there taking temperatures. They will be entering wearing their mask. Anyone with a temperature, we, Marine feels that 100 or above must immediately leave the building and report their absence with WFM. Employees who are sent home with a fever should probably, or should probably, should not return to work until the CDC, till they meet the CDC's right criteria for returning to work. So we do expect some questions on that. There are multiple things that might cause someone to run a fever. So we are going to handle those. We are going to provide all of our staff with paperwork if they do have a fever, kind of explaining the process and then how to ask specific questions privately.
I'm curious, how's it come up 100, 100 as the fever?
That is this.
Go ahead. 100.4, but with the variances in the temperature taking and really, you know, without us being a hospital or really a healthcare providing facility, we're not going to have those thermometers that are that tuned. So that's why we picked the even number of 100.
Next slide, I think.
Yep.
Okay. So then really, once they get in the doors, they're going to be seeing a number of workplace modifications. And so, you know, this slide indicates that we'll be using one entrance only, which would be upstairs, upper level lobby entrance. But we are also at this point in just our most recent problem solving meeting considering having the lower level entrance utilized for only the first hour of the day from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM to just lessen the volume of people entering in one instance or the, the need for staff to queue up in a line to get into the building, especially, you know, summertime is very hot or it's the weather. And then also to just be able to discourage that social interaction and making sure people keep that six feet distance. We're going to be requiring staff to use their proxy card, even though we'll be monitoring the entrances. And that is primarily being done because the St. Louis County Department of Health requires that we keep a record of everyone that enters the building each day. So it'll be easy for us to pull the report by everybody that scanned in. If someone has misplaced their card at the time that they're arriving or left it at home on the kitchen counter, we will have the ability for them to physically sign in on the sign-in sheet each day. That will be kept with that report. As Wendy mentioned, we'll be doing temperature checks upon entry. And then upon temperature check entry, staff will be given some type of sticker notification that their temperature cleared. As long as they don't lose that sticker, if they leave at lunchtime or if they leave to get some fresh air in the parking lot and come back in, they will not have their temperature taken again. Staff will be required to wear a mask when they enter the building. If for some reason they don't have a mask, we will have masks available to provide for them. We are asking all staff to go immediately to your workstation instead of walking around doing good mornings and all of those things. We're not saying that staff aren't able to do those things, but we're preferring that they do that via phone or email. We're also closing our break rooms and so they won't have access to those refrigerators, microwaves, ice machines, vending machines, a lot of that again, that's health department or CDC recommendation.
Sounds just like a sweatshop, yeah.
So, which is another reason why we're doing a lot of notification in advance. So staff know that they either need to pack their lunch or plan to leave for lunch, those types of things. Our drinking cupons, of course, are going to continue to be available and they will be cleaned hourly. And we're really, we're really encouraging staff to practice only having one individual in a restroom at a time. We know that's not always going to work. Some of our larger capacity restrooms, we can have more than one. Some of the smaller not. One thing that has just been updated, it's not on this slide, but we just made the decision is we're having installed on our bathroom doors that don't have the switch plate entry devices, which are referred to technically, I learned as a step-in pool. You may have seen these at a restaurant if you. You may have seen these at a restaurant if you've been out to eat. But you can use your foot on the bottom of the door to grab a hold of and pull the door open. So you don't have to touch the restroom door with your fingers or your hands. So those are relatively inexpensive, I think $40 to $50 apiece. And they can be installed by our, our facilities department. It just requires a root and a drill. So those will also be installed at our, at all of our restrooms.
Did you say one person at a time in the restroom?
That's what we're asking people to do, but we're not, we're not mandating that. But there are many people that don't want to be in the restroom with other people, given the COVID concern.
Yes. And so we're also asking staff, of course, to practice social distancing, so trying to stay away six feet at all times. Conduct any of our meetings, so we will not have our conference rooms open, our meeting areas open, they will be closed. So continuing to have conversations via phone or using Zoom. Toby has done an extremely nice job getting Plexiglas, working with the Ford company, to getting Plexiglas on our entrance ways. They will be rolling that out at central office and the learning centers. And then we'll move that to the schools. Conference rooms, again, will be closed. We're going to try to ask staff that when you're in the hallways, you try to limit, wait until a person comes down a hallway or pay attention to who's in the hallway. So we're not passing, wait till they come by. And then, of course, try to refrain from socializing in any areas where staff would come together. Next slide.
So Wendy, what's the benefit of coming into the office if you can't even meet with other people who are here face-to-face? I mean, what's the point then?
I think it's to get people back comfortable into the building, to start getting people back into routines. I think we're following the CDC very closely. So although this is the plan right now, we will take it week by week, day by day, hour by hour, for some matters of when we possibly could start meeting together. I think for the most part, it gets people back into routines and business is underway.
That's important. I mean, even in restaurants, though, you can meet at the same table with three other people, if four other people.
Right.
Taking the maximum precautions.
Family. Yeah. I would, I would
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Amy.
Well, I think like this type of situation is very well orchestrated and very well monitored. That we're all six feet apart and following all the precautions and all that type of thing. When you start looking at multiple people on multiple levels and multiple departments, who is going to be the watchdog to make sure that all of those things are being implemented? So I think first get people back, get in the routine, get a comfort level that it's safe and that we have the PPE and the precautions. And then hopefully, as we move into phase two and three, we can loosen some of these restrictions as long as the curve stays flat and the recommendations from the St. Louis County Health Department allow.
Yeah, because we have over 100 people returning for phase one. For phase one, some of them are here. So we have to be very, we're worried, you know, we have to be very critical about making sure that we are, we don't have any community spread or anything like that, because we're a large enough number.
I'm just, then, you have phone numbers of everyone here. I'm just saying, when I went to a restaurant, that you have to give a phone number next to your name, base where they
We all have regular phones, yeah.
But it's contact tracing.
Yeah.
Right.
If somebody's there that might get it.
I think it's this slide, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, for cleaning and disinfecting, we're going to, you know, obviously, the reason we'll be closing the building at 3:30 each day is to allow the cleaning staff to do a much more thorough cleaning than they typically did Monday through Friday in the evening. So that's why we'll be closing at 3:30. But we're also going to encourage staff to clean their workstations as frequently as they feel necessary. And we will provide disinfectant and disinfectant wipes at cleaning stations located throughout central office, the learning center, and within our SSD schools, it'll be located in the school offices. And then that way, staff, if they choose, they can like don't everything they would like in addition to regular cleaning. And then also, hand sanitizers will be located throughout the building. So you may or may not have noticed this evening, as you came to the board meeting, that the hand sanitizers were mounted on the walls here at central office. They have those, I believe, at the learning center. And they are in the process of getting those installed this summer at our schools as well.
So Amy, is the expectation that their workday ends at 3:30 then? So you don't expect them to go home and continue working for the couple extra hours of the workday?
Well, I would, you know, I think for our administrative level staff, if there are projects that need to be finished, there's an expectation that that would be finished. For our hourly staff, I mean, once they clock out and travel, we'll be just adjusting paywalls. Next slide.
Along with cleaning and disinfecting, we have specific rules for our face masks. So we will be using what's called universal masking is in effect in all of our SSD buildings. Our employees will be required to wear district-approved face masks. We are continually working with John and Maureen to come up with what that means, what district-approved face mask means. Right now, the CDC suggests it is cloth masking. Expectations, of course, when you are eating or you're using the restroom, if you are alone, individual or in closed spaces, would be less. If you have a door, you are allowed to take off your mask. But again, if you are up to move or go somewhere, you need to place your mask back on. Of course, when you are wearing your mask, we want to remind them to at least keep six feet away between themselves and others. The face cover is not suitable for social distancing. And of course, the district is providing and has ordered both cloth and shield masking for all of our employees. And those
Masking for all of the employees? Yeah, face shield for all employees?
Yes.
Wow.
Well, because some employees, if it's a cubicle-type situation, they're not really ever going to be in a position where they can remove their mask. So we feel that they may find the face shield more comfortable.
Oh, I understand, I was using the wrong voice.
Having a face shield on that covers, it's a facial that will cover fully and will also allow you to take a drink out of a straw and those types of things while you're sitting at your workstation.
We have also, first, just Dr. Cuneo, the masks. I don't know if you've seen them, that have the clear space for those of you who can read lips. We also have those on order as well, as well as the face shields.
Interesting.
Next slide.
And not just our appearing populations, but also some of our students with some significant emotional needs that may need to be able to read the facial expression of the adult working with them. So restricted building access, so we're not going to be allowing visitors at phase one. So we will have signage at the front of the building instructing visitors who would have showed up that, you know, due to precautions, that we're not allowing visitors, providers and phone numbers for them to reach individuals. And then, like I said, those without their building access card, we will have them disowned in. Next slide.
For the SSD schools who will be reporting, we have both our administrators, so our principals and our assistant principals, and all schools have a minimum of one 12-month secretary. I do believe our tech schools may have two 12-month secretaries. Of course, they will be socially distanced. We are taking precautions in where they would sit. They will follow the same guidelines. We are working on procedures if they are going to take their temperature, since it is limited staff there. Right now, they will follow the screening precautions as well as everyone else as they come in. And again, as Amy stated, buildings will not be open to the public. So we will have signs hanging on the doors for our community members who may think or see cars in the lot that might think the building is open to call using the number. And we'll have those phones answered on a regular basis. Next slide.
So our distribution center will also have key employees return to work in phase one. And so at this point, supervisors have been reporting ever since the end of April because we were starting to receive shipments, all these things we've talked about ordering, not to mention all of the technology items we order every year, curriculum items, everything else that we need to run the district. Those things are starting to, started to be delivered in April. So our two supervisors were taking split shifts going in. And at this point, we also have some office staff rotating, coming in just to kind of help with monitoring those deliveries, receiving those, and inventorying those. And then they'll be following the same guidelines and the same wellness checks. We've already done a lot of marking in that building at the six feet, social distancing, as well as providing, since they're housing all of the PPE, I have a feeling they'll be the only one that's guaranteed to have that right away. But all of the same hand sanitizing, masks, the face shields, those types of things. They, you know, it's a very, very, very busy place in the summer. And so we're really doing a lot of individual work with the supervisors there to figure out the best way to schedule staff and have staggered schedules and potentially a longer workday with some coming in early and some staying later, just in order to move all the inventory we need to normally move in the summer, not to mention all the PPE that we've now ordered that has to be received, ordered, moved.
That was interesting, you had said staggered times. But on the other SSD buildings, you're not going to have staggered coming and going?
Not in phase one. Not in phase one.
There's only, what, 100 people in it? How many people?
No, phase one, in this building, there are only the two, the principal and assistant principal in the clerk.
Okay, how about central offices there?
The majority, we're about 70.
It's about 79 to 80. But because they're spread out throughout the building, there is no need to stagger the schedules in phase one. When we add another 50 people in phase two, that's when we have to go into staggered schedules.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
The other thing about phase one is there, everybody has a door, and then the administrative assistant is in a cubicle, but there's nobody next to that person.
All right, next slide.
I can't say enough about the work that our maintenance guys are doing. Toby and his crew are amazing every day dealing with the summer activities, getting all the stuff done, construction. They are taking time out and walking the buildings and making sure that they are, our buildings are prepared for them to come back. They actually returned May 4th. They have been using the screening process since they returned on May 4th. They are, of course, completing all of the repairs in addition to hanging the hand sanitizers and getting the Plexiglas and walking and making sure the foot, the footplates are going to be installed and ready to go. They have used all of their PPE, so they have both cloth masks. I'm unsure what shields they may have. And of course, any of their other PPE, if they're going on to construction sites that they have been using. But Toby and his crew has done a phenomenal job with this. Next slide.
So then, of course, we're still giving you just a little glimpse on this last slide of what phase two and phase three, we hope that will look like. So like we said, sometime between June 15th and July 1st, phase one will be fully implemented. We're really hoping that that would occur beginning on June 22nd or sometime that, early that week at this point. And then phase two is like what we talked about, is where we would be bringing in two additional staff members, potentially in each department, and doing those alternating schedules. And then at phase three, we would be looking at everyone's return to work and continuing with the alternating schedules. I know Dr. Bauer has pretty much provided an update at every board meeting. It is my understanding for Dr. Keenan to ask for us to continue with that. And so hopefully, on the 23rd, we share with you that phase one has begun and what our plans are for phase two. And our last slide is questions. Is there any?
With the phase one focus, I mean, we did have everybody on a Zoom call, everybody, it was nice seeing everybody. I mean, that was a night, I think, just getting back in contact with everybody. And we'll work through people with their questions concerned. I think it's like to your question, like why do it? I think it just gives us back to the normalcy to get back into the routine. I've also been doing Zoom calls with teachers in our SSD schools and in the partner districts and just asking them about, you know, what are some of your concerns about coming back to school and explaining what we're putting into place. And for the most part, our teachers are very positive, they're into the kids, they're ready to get back into how do we help support our students. So it, you know, people are apprehensive, but they're also, you know, they asked some really good questions. But it's also, we're all in this together, and how can we get back to some normalcy? So it's been, overall, given the fact that it's March 18th, it's been a whole different world. I think people are, you know, trying to stay very positive.
Do you think that we will be opening schools?
Yeah, I do.
Good.
I think that we're definitely leaning more towards that. I think the reality of a lot of districts talking about having output schedules is going to be very difficult because the reason we were able to do this was because parents, businesses, folks, parents, if the businesses and parents are at home, we have to have kids. And so we have to, I think we're going to be more looking at adapting to making sure we're monitoring students and the staff coming in. And they're talking more that we should be looking at if you have to close the wing or if you have to close part of it, like cleaning it and addressing if there's any people coming up with symptoms. Instead of just closing everything.
May I, and it's, it is with this, with the Zoom. I did see the information that was sent to us on how to do Zoom. And that was the one page. I, what I was hoping we could also get is a one page that would tell parents, not the mechanics of how to do Zoom, but how do you prepare kids to do Zoom? In other words, make sure the kid has gone to the bathroom before they have their hour of Zoom. Make sure, guy, he's clothed. I know you sound crazy.
That the TV's not on in the background.
The TV's not on in the background. That it's in a, and these seem like very simple things, but I have seen some horror stories. I've heard horror stories of when people have had Zoom.
Yeah.
And I've also had horror stories where a father went to the bathroom, they're right, right past it, didn't have any clothes on in the middle of a Zoom.
Yeah.
You know, and people don't realize that other people can see.
Yeah.
And these, you know, I think if in fact we do close down again, not only is she giving the mechanics of how to do Zoom, but some real basics of
Yeah.
how to prepare, what goes on, this is your one hour a day. Make sure that, you know, you're not eating during this, the TV's not on, that whatever's, you know, the candy on, I mean, electronic device, device you got is not there, the phone's not there. Simple things like that.
Dr. Cuneo, I'm sorry, there were, I'm sorry you did not receive that. There were, there should have been two attachments. One of them was the Zoom meeting how-tos. And the second one was the parent tips for the virtual learning environment. So if you did not get that, I'll be more than happy to send that to you.
But the only one I got was the one that was the mechanics of Zoom, which I thought was very nice.
There are two documents.
I didn't get the other one.
Okay, I'll make sure I get that to you, sir.
Thank you.
Wendy, oh, it's in Word doc, someone emailed it to you right now.
Thank you.
And I think that your concern in that situation, it may be valid, but it also goes to the maturity of the kid. And I just don't, I don't have a lot of faith in that, in that maturity aspect of it for kids. And at what age does that maturity actually come into play? So I think that we're going to see some difficulties regarding those things that are going to still persist. I don't see that, I don't have that faith.
I am, I can just, when I have a child with this limited attention span anyhow. Yeah. And he's the kid that says, and then we bring him to school and we say, by the way, you have to wear a mask. You know, I can see where those facial will be much better than wearing a mask where you'd be playing with it.
Yeah, and I think that's the one thing the teachers have talked about is that, you know, the concern is kids coming to school and now they're experiencing them differently. And especially, you know, some of our students who are nonverbal, the autistic students who are really, you know, like, some of our teachers were saying, like, you know, they, they won't even let them wear a hat, you know, because the kids are like this, it just bothers them. So it's going to be a lot of social stories. It's going to be, we're going to be talking about, you know, at the beginning of the year, how do we make sure we're preparing our students and
I was hoping before we even, before school even starts, we would end up talking with the parents and saying, if your child's never had a facial scrape, what's going on? If you've never had a mask, what went on? So that the first day in school, they're not stuck with wearing one of these things.
It's going to be a lot of comparing people before we walk in, much more so than we have to do in the past.
But thank you all for all your work. May I ask, just since we have three more minutes, Dr. Keenan, can I ask you to leave this room for a second?
Sure.
Just give me two minutes. Just give me two minutes. And, yeah.
Public meeting.
And can I get rid of the public Zoom? Right, there's a nice, um, decorative area. Can I do this later? I just need to talk to the board for a second.
So are we ready to conclude, end this meeting?
Yes, please. Work studies.
We were, nice.
And we'll, that's only be two, three minutes.
That's all right, that's good. Well, we didn't do roll call, so we don't have to return.
Okay, that's fine.
Right?
Right.
We will end our meeting. All right, ending the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
People on the board, could you please stay on for a second, please, this is only, take a little bit?
Julie, why don't you stand for a second?
Almost have to make sure nobody else is on.
Okay.
Stay on.
We go back and use the link to the other Zoom meeting, because this might still be a public meeting here.